Meeting, uh, Bossier City, little after three, three oh two, on Tuesday, October the thirty first. We'll have the call to order, uh, invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith, Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Councilmember Brian Hammond.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, Lord, and we ask that you will be with each and every one of us in here as we conduct the business of the people of Bossier City, God. God, I pray that you will be with each and every one of us as we leave out of here, that you will protect us, and, Lord, especially tonight, as, uh, the children of Bossier City will be out, uh, celebrating, that you will protect them, uh, and be with everybody, uh, on the streets this evening, Lord, and we ask all this in your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
All present. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the President Pro Tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. Any re- all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the Sergeant at Arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, any announcements? Any ceremonial matters or guests? Uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Has it popped up, counsel? Motion carries.
All right, I intend a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting and dispense with a reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, bids?
Witness opening of sealed bids for P two-three dash one-five municipal fire station and parking lot lighting.
It's just lights.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler, today we're opening the bids for, um, project number P twenty-three fifteen municipal fire station and parking lot lighting. There was one addendum which included the approved manufacturer and included sign-in sheet noting items discussed at the pre-bid meeting. The engineer's estimate for this project is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The first bid is from Camus Electric. They do have their bid bond. And they did acknowledge the addendum. The total bid on this project is one hundred forty-three thousand five hundred and ten dollars. The next bid is from Feezale Electrical Contracting. They did acknowledge their addendum. The bid bond is included, and their total is one hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. The next bid is from Hope Contractors of Shreveport Incorporated. They did acknowledge the addendum. The bid bond is included, and their bid is for two hundred thousand dollars even. And the last bid for this project is from Willhite Electric Company. They did acknowledge their addendum. The bid bond is included, and their bid is one hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That's one eight five one three five.
Make motion we approve the reading of the bids.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions on from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three sales tax improvement fund for traffic signal communication upgrades. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amend the ordinance seventy-six of twenty twenty-three, appropriate an additional seven hundred thousand dollars in funds from the twenty eighteen LCDA bond fund to supplement the twenty twenty-three public utilities capital budget for miscellaneous water loops necessary for improving water flow for fire protection. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending the twenty twenty-three streets and drainage fund budget by seven hundred thousand dollars to increase the capital street improvements project. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby, and Councilmore, Councilman Maggio.
No.
Smith again. Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance eight of twenty nineteen, appropriating an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the twenty seventeen sales tax bond towards the Tinsley Park baseball renovations for the completion of the Tinsley Park dugout replacement project, awarding the base bid to Delta Specialty Contractors LLC in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred dollars, and approving the report of deductive change order number one in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience?
Hi, David Crockett, six-five-three Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Just in general, first, uh, the annual core inflation rate for the la- for the last twelve months in September was four point one percent. The Fed not finished hiking rates. We fake it facing economic, uh, a period of economic uncertainty. I think that raises an issue that you need to consider. You may reasonably decide not to borrow money for the next five years because of interest rates, and it would be more prudent not to borrow money for the next thirteen years so you can afford pay raises. So why are you spending on a less than critical infrastructure item such as this? I think that's what the public is trying to find out. Tinsley Field, whether it be eighteen or twenty-one million dollar project, if you pick eighteen million, the total revenue from Parks and Recs for twenty twenty-four budgeted is four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if you took every nickel that you spent, if that was what you were gonna raise, that you spent that for thirty-six years, that's what it would take if you were gonna try to run this like a business. And I know Parks and Recs is not like a business necessarily, but how many World Series can you guarantee that you're gonna get in the future for twenty-one million dollars? I think that's the question. You know, we're doing this probably just to get one. This is what I heard as I sat down last week about this project. You need a set of dugouts because a bunch of affluent, middle-class men carry a support bag that's big as a team's bag, so they have to be able to fit that in a dugout with a bunch of adults. Other, other parts of Bossier City need your attention. I already raised the issue with Hooters Park, so what I did was I sent everybody in the city council a slideshow with the pictures that I took over a year ago, and none of those things have been fixed. There are tile floors there that are stained, that are awful. They look, they were there since the place was built, probably about forty fi- forty to fifty years ago. So yes, you have brand-new, uh, gym floor for the basketball area, but the other parts, so, so don't ask, what have you done? Ask what you haven't done. Go out and look at it. If it's in your district, I believe it's yours, Mr. Darby, I would go out there and look at it yourself and make a punch list. Some things you don't divvy out by district and divide it up. You have to spend attention in certain areas. But anyway, who has read this proposal? What's included in the project? I hope one of the councilmen has, because that's how we get towers. We don't read proposals. Where is this in your capital projects plan? I don't see it. What's the trade-off? How much would it cost for you to put local bar- ball fields, improve those ball fields, raise them up, add a bunch of dirt so kids can go and practice there on a daily basis so they have a, have a place to go to practice? Finally, I went to the Parks and Recs website to, to find out what the actual policies are that, that Councilman Smith mentioned last week, and I can't find them. The website needs to be improved. I think that, that there's, there's a good way to find out if you're playing in a game, but that's about all you can find on the website. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any additional comments, Republic?
Good afternoon, councilman mayor. I'm Louis Cook with Bossier City Parks and Rec. I am the superintendent of maintenance, and I'm hopeful you got the presentation that I sent you guys with the improvements that we've made over the past ten ye- ten years with Hooters Park. And quite honestly, I'm very proud of the improvements we've made at that park. I'm very proud of the men and women that work in our department and work very diligently to make improvements to not only that park, but to all of our parks in Bossier City. These dugouts are important. We want to remain competitive. And as the last gentleman just spoke, we have raised over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in our department to date, undisputable this year, and we're not done. And dugouts are an important part of us being able to rent those facilities, believe it or not. They are old, they are out of date. But if we wanna talk about Hooters Park, I'd certainly be glad to, because I've got a great relationship with Ms. Jeter. We've worked very diligently with Ms. Jeter and with other community members down there to make sure that we put our best foot forward. Do we fall short once in a while? Absolutely. There's not an individual or a person in a department that does it from time to time. But we've done a lot down at Hooters Park, and if you look at that second page of that presentation, I, Mr. Bohannon sent you all, you will see that we have made significant improvements down there. We have, 'cause I know practice came up at the last council meeting. We have three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five kids that participated in Bossier Parks and Recreation activities this calendar year. And I'm not trying to be hug- hateful or ugly, but not one of those that practiced at Tinsley, not at the soccer complex, not at the football complex, not at any of our baseball complexes. If you put that much foot traffic on the football and soccer fields at Tinsley, there won't be a blade of grass standing. So we aren't able to do that, nor do we have the manpower to do that. Some things we've already got scheduled for next year. We've got probably thirty-one to thirty-five tournaments already scheduled for next year. This is our third World Series, by the way. We did it in twenty fourteen, we did it in twenty eighteen, we're gonna do it again in twenty twenty-four, and this won't be the last one. If you want the tourist bureau to do an economic impact of what Tinsley has brought in this calendar year, I assure you it's probably close to ten million dollars between the wages, the hotel motel taxes that we've already brought in, the tax revenue that we've already contributed toward local taxes, in addition to the monies we've collected from the city concessionaire. So for us to say that our department's a black hole is not true. We are a service department, one of which we are very, very proud of. We provide a service to the citizens, and we provide a service to people that come in our community and in our town. Tennis Center, we've probably averaged between thirty and forty-five thousand trips. Maybe Louis Cook went thirty to forty-five thousand times up there during the calendar year, but we still had at least that many positive interactions with the community and that center. So I'm proud of what the department does. I enjoy working for Mr. Bohannon. I enjoy working for you all, specifically the mayor, who is a very strong driving force in making sure that we got that facility open in twenty twenty-one, that we could play baseball and softball out there. But just to reaffirm something that has been brought up over and over, this past weekend, we had fifty-two teams scheduled at Tinsley One and Tinsley Two. Fifty-two teams scheduled. Some of the age groups did not make, but I printed it out, and you all can go on their websites and look. You can go to FASAA, you can go to UTRIP, you can go to 2D. Out of those fifty-two teams, four teams listed Bossier City. One team listed Bossier. Well, I live in Lakewood. I have a Bossier City address. I do not live in the city limits. My daughter lives north of town, off a domain. That is not in the city limits. So those are things that we need to be looking at. Uh, I work in the city, and I've been blessed to work here for ten years, and I'd like to work ten more. I do enjoy it. I've got great people in our department that work it, and as I've stated before, work very diligently, but it's hard. Pay raises don't come from capital money. You all know that. Pay raises don't come from bond money. You all know that. Those aren't reoccurring funds. As much as I'd like our guys to get some, uh, pay raises, I think you all too, but we've gotta make some tough decisions. But this one benefits the city, and I hope you'll approve it, because it absolutely benefits the city.
Louis. Not to be ugly, but the person that spoke really doesn't know a whole lot. As you know, I've been involved in Bossier Parks Recreation with my kids, that's now in fifties, my grandkids, and probably my great-grandkids coming up too. I mean, we've, we've done it all from playing baseball to playing in tournaments over the weekends. I know how much they draw. The people come in and they stay. So I appreciate your help, your, your, you know, your in clays, uh, and the people that work for you too.
And they appreciate that as well as I do, Councilman Williams. You know, and you go back to tax dollars, and, and again, I'm not trying to be a comedian up here, but we've got two ponds at Walker Place Park. We're not, we're not tubing at Walker Place Park. We've got a pond, we've got a body of water. Why don't they get to use that? I mean, I could go on example after example if I need to, but at the end of the day, in twenty eighteen, when our department was charged with generating some ideas for some potential bond money, we sent that to the city attorney, to the then-time mayor, to the council, and we thought this would be the best use of those funds to get people in our restaurants, in our hotels, and in our shopping centers. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that, and I think it's only gonna compound year over year.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Two thousand eighteen, year to date. This is operating expenditures, capital expenditures, everything, forty-five million seven hundred eighty-two dollars, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents is what has been spent on Parks and Recs. It's two thousand eighteen.
That's probably true, but you know what?
Hold on, I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
Yes, sir. Okay.
It has generated one million four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and six hundred and thirty, one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars in revenue since two thousand eighteen. That's total.
Okay.
How are, how are we gonna make up forty-five million dollars that has been spent? I understand it's a quality of life. Everything is a quality of life. Streets are a quality of life, sidewalks, everything. But I mean, you just keep spending and spending and spending and spending. It's got to produce more revenue. And don't, don't tell me tax dollars going to restaurants and stuff like that, 'cause I can bring twenty-five restaurant owners that are within three miles of the park, and they can bring and show you their tax dollars that are not coming.
I disagree with that, obviously. I'm not the department head, but I, I will say this.
No, you're not the department head.
If, well, you asked me, though.
Yeah, I did.
And it gets contentious up here, and I don't understand that, 'cause I, I don't come up here to be contentious at all. But...
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
For this entire meeting, people have been carrying on conversations and responding from the audience. Miss, Madam Clerk, will you please read again the decorum that we, and again, here we go again, with responses from the audience. We respect everyone that comes up here, and we, no one talks, no one says anything. We need to respect what this gentleman's saying and allow, allow him the floor. If you wish to speak, you're more than welcome to come to the mic and speak. Would you please read the decorum again, Madam Clerk, so that everyone is on notice that whoever has the floor, whether it's Councilman Hammond, Mr. Cook, whether it's, uh, Mr. Crockett, whoever, will have the respect and allow these people to speak without interference from the audience. Thank you.
Would you like, would you like the whole thing, sir, or just?
Absolutely.
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by President Pro Tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the Sergeant at Arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Thank you.
You go ahead.
Well, just, just getting back to the question of, of revenue, I mean, with Field of Dreams, we spent quite a bit of money in Field of Dreams. Does this council not feel that that was a worthwhile endeavor? That was part of the bond, that was part of capital money. We just put new playgrounds at Mitchell, Metta View, and Mike Wood. The old playgrounds were about to fall down. They were a legal liability. Do we not wanna replace those? If you go back and look at our capital budgets, that you all approved, by the way, as well as our general operating budget, we, we're not, we've not spent a dime over our budget. We, we have spent what was allocated to our department. And if you go back and look at the expenditures, they were for improvements or replacements to make improvements. They're not frivolous spending. We've got twenty lawnmowers that go out pretty much every day right now. The people ride. The X marks have gone up. Pickup trucks for our employees to get in and go from one park to the next park to cut the grass. Those have also gone up. As the gentleman stated earlier, inflation's hit our department just like it's hit every department. But I mean, I don't have a forty-five million dollar idea that's gonna bring that in in one year. Yes, it takes time. And yes, they are, they are improvements in the quality of life for the pe- just like swimming pools. We've had to upgrade our pools within that timeframe as well.
You all charge people to come to the swimming pools?
We do. It's a dollar. It, we could charge, it's a dollar for a kid, two dollars for an adult. We could charge ten dollars, and we're still not gonna make money on swimming pools.
Make something.
Well, you raise it, you're gonna lose on the population that is attending. Not to mention, we can't find lifeguards as it is. We've not been able to offer swim lessons in three years because we can't find enough lifeguards.
Myself and Councilman Smith were appointed by, I think that time, President Darby of the council to come up with ways that we felt Parks and Rec could generate more revenue.
Yes, sir.
Have any of those been implemented?
Well, we're in the process now of looking into sponsorship, 'cause I know that is one area that you all wanted to move forward to. We've presented some eyes, ideas to the mayor and his team, and once they've had an opportunity to review those and get back with us, we'll proceed. I know the tennis center up there, that our tennis professional has engaged in conversations with businesses to put some sponsorship on some of the wind screens. So I know that's also in line to be coming up, but again, you're talking hundreds of thousands, you're not talking tens of millions.
I understand that, but, um, what would two hundred thousand dollars extra a year in revenue do?
Well, it doesn't come back to our department, so you tell me where it would go.
Well, I mean, it would help on the overall bottom line. I, I mean, we, you, you're not getting my point that we're just, at some point, we're just spending, 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 and spending. I mean, we, we may look up and we're at a hundred and fifty million dollars in quality of life. I mean, that, that's what everybody loves to say, it's quality of life. But quality of life, too, is still having other stuff in the city that you live in.
Well, are you wanting, and I'm asking, are you wanting us to charge a gate for where we have a B par function?
That, that's not, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, that's a way of generating revenue, though.
Okay, well, then, is that what y'all wanna do?
No, that's not what we wanna do. We just raised our fees from forty-five to sixty.
I think, I think what we need to do, I think we need to have this conversation with the department head of this and not you.
I, I don't disagree, and I will tell you this, Mr. Bohannon has been there for almost eighteen, twenty years, and I don't know that he's heard from some of the councilmen that have questioned some of the expenditures that we've had, and I know he would be welcome to that. He's on vacation now, and he'll be back Friday.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. All right, any additional questions from the council? Any additional questions from the audience?
Debra Ross, uh, twelve hundred Fuller Love, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven twelve. I don't have no problem with them wanting to do whatever they wanna do to Tinsley Park. I play softball. I can understand that you wanna have a nice park to go and play in and go in the dugout. But on this young man occasion, I live in Barstow Annex. I know what the gym looked like. I have pictures of the gym. Yeah, you guys did work at the gym, but the floors, the floors are overcoated, and it has run off of the coat. Now, they, whoever did the lot, the, uh, overlay of the basketball court, they let the, uh, the, the liquid or whatever you wanna call it, brought, ran off the coat. So it's off of the court, and it's run onto the regular floor. The flooring need to be done, and then the ladies bathroom down there. Uh, the bathroom, when you push the door open, you can see all the stalls. So whoever came in and renovated or even put the bathroom in there, they didn't take no attention to the door being opened when you go in there, 'cause when you push the door open, you can see all the stalls, and if anybody's in the stall, you can see them in the stall. So the, the Barstow Annex, Hooters Park, do need some work, and, and also the, the tiles and stuff is coming out of the walls. So it do need some work, and I, like I say, I don't have no problem with the, uh, baseball field, 'cause I play softball, and when I played in tournaments, we loved a nice dugout to be in. But on the half of Barstow Annex and Hooters Park, I live there. I go to the park. I participate in the park, witness Jeter. I am the vice president on the Barstow Annex Association. So there is some work need to be done in Barstow Annex, Hooters Park. Thank you.
Additional questions specific to the Tinsley Park baseball renovations from the audience? All right, we've got councilman input. Cast your vote.
Motion carries. I'm working on it. Didn't pop up for some reason.
The vote was four to two.
It was four to, I, but it's not showing who made the motion in the second. But it was Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Williams and Mr. Montgomery.
It was five to two.
Five to, I'm sorry.
Five to, yes, I'm sorry, five to.
With Councilman Smith, Councilman Hammond's against.
Right. Right.
It popped up again, Paulus.
Yeah, I'm filling it in.
Okay.
I think it was a computer glitch.
There you go.
There we go. Adopting ordinance to approve report of change order number one for Tinsley Ball Park parking lot expansion phase one and two with an increase in project cost of $99,631.52 and adding an additional 21 days. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mary Giles, 1648 Williamsburg Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I just want to ask, since we passed this, the money that's generated from this so needed baseball dugout stuff going on with this, I mean, what are they doing with that money? I mean, are they putting it back into the communities? And so that's, that's a question. I would like to know more about that. You know, like what, all this money is being generated. I mean, Hooters Park just got this problem, it's been going on for a long time. So I'm asking, if they're making that kind of money, what, where's the money going? I really would like to know more about that. Thank you.
Who else you want to address that or Ben? Do you have any answers?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Order. The item before us is not, it's not that, that at all.
No.
So, you know, we need to stick to the agenda. She can make a, just.
That was about the Tinsley Park I was taking in general.
May have been with Clay.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Giles, the department head will be back Friday. If you'd like to make an appointment with Clay Bohannon. Go. All right, any additional comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend the 2023 general fund budget to increase information services department overtime expenditures by $10,000. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, adopting ordinance, amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being 1.608 acres, more or less, from RA residential agriculture to B3 general business for a proposed car wash facility located in section 33 Township 19 North Range 13 West, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, and it's favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio and Councilman Darby. Are there comments from the audience?
I'd like to ask a lot of, just where is this at? Or where it's going to be?
Brookshire's is in there now.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, this will be just immediately south of the new Brookshire's grocery store at Airline in Wimpole. So they're going to share the same access there on the south end.
Share the same what?
The same access point. So there won't be an additional curb cut on Airline Drive.
Any additional questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance, amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being two acres, more or less, from RA residential agriculture to B3 general business for proposed office warehouses located at 1064, 1072, 1080, 1088 Whitehurst Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance, amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being 4.3 acres, more or less, from RA residential agriculture to B3 general business, generally located at 1096, 1104, 1112, 1120, 1128, 1136, 1144, 1152 Whitehurst Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a piano bar located at 360 Boardwalk Boulevard in Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance approving a conditional use approval for a community center and coffee shop in an RFD Riverfront development located at 310 and 315 Montgomery Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Maggio. I didn't catch the second.
I had a first by Councilman Smith.
Smith, then Maggio.
And Mr. Darby.
That's what I heard.
I am.
How are you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Allison Hammett on behalf of the conditional use. I don't know if I need to be up here for any questions since the MPC already approved it.
Are there questions from the council?
Well, I was going to tell them, tell y'all what kind of job they do for our community and the kids and the families and since they opened about, what, four years ago and it made a change in that community. When you teach Jesus, when you teach the young kids about the Lord, it's a change. And now it's like a big family back there and it's getting better. And I want to take my hat off to y'all. Anybody teach a what a Lord, we can't, we got to help them all. Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you. Hey, and we actually, thank you. We actually brought for y'all, and Mark can pass them out, some praise reports. So we do this, we did it last year, and then we also did it this year, even though we're not finished yet, but we like to send it out to people so they know what we've been doing in the community so far this year. So that just goes, you know, to the glory of the Lord because without him, we could not do all the work that we're doing.
Any other questions here? Are there any comments from the audience? All right.
Thank you for coming.
Please cast your vote.
Adopted ordinance approving a conditional use for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on and off premise consumption at a brewery, microbrewery, the Seventh Tap, located at 525 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading, favorable by MPC.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond. Yeah, and Montgomery. Second by Councilman Maggio.
Take that one.
Smith.
Take one. Yep, you can take one of them.
All right. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution adopting the city of Bossier City's current investment policy in accordance with Louisiana revised statute 33:2955D and section 16.02J of the Bossier City Charter. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution revoking ITEP status of J and R Juno LLC and A W Chesterton Company. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions or comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City, Coran Post Number 388 of the American Legion, District Four, Department of Louisiana, and Women's Veterans of the Arcletex for expansion of the monument honoring women veterans located on the grounds of the municipal complex. First and final reading.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience?
I'd ask Amanda or somebody, Mayor, what kind of expansion are they going to do out there?
They're going to put some more concrete out there so people can put the chairs and people can stand on and stuff, so up standing in mud and all that kind of stuff.
Concrete where?
Around the woman's statue out there. Is it adjacent?
They're going to expand further out from the female veterans statue and they received money from capital outlay, so they need a resolution since it is on city-owned property that we are in agreement in allowing them to do that.
They're going toward the parking lots?
Correct. They wanted to make it more accessible, so they have some bricks laid there, but for people who have mobility issues, the concrete pad will make it much easier for them to get there.
No campfires or nothing, huh?
Sorry.
No campfires or nothing out there, huh?
No.
And the capital outlay is the state, not the city, right?
Correct. Yes, sir. These are no city funds.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Mayor?
I mean, any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Appoint Bo Hayes to the Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tourist Commission as a representative for the city of Bossier City for a three-year term beginning on January 1st, 2024.
Some move. Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Maggio. Any questions or comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Just a general question, is, are all the commissions and boards that Bossier City nominates people to term limited? Are there any that are not term limited? I'd just like to know in general.
I don't know the answer to that.
Are they all term limited? I mean, I think that's a good thing.
I'm not going to, um, probably not. People usually want to get off. Like, when the sports commission started, I was on it for 11 and a half years and I got, you know, it was time for me to get off and Mr. Frey took my spot. So, you know, that's just an example. You know, I don't know if the, this board here has a term limit.
It says it's a three, three-year term beginning January 1st, 2024.
Do all of them?
Mr. President, if I may, the boards don't have any term limit in the fact that you could be appointed and reappointed and reappointed and reappointed. And so if the question is, are there term limits? No, there are not. It's for a three-year term, but Mr. Hayes or anybody else, there are people that serve for tremendous periods of time. If they're, if they're active serving, there's no term limits on any boards to answer Mr. Crockett's question.
Exactly. Sometimes it may be hard to get somebody to serve, so we appreciate anybody that wants to serve.
Okay, that's a good enough answer. And please indulge me for just a real quick comment.
Real quick, Mr., Ms. Nottingham was trying to.
Oh, go ahead, answer the question.
I'm sorry. I did, I just wanted to say, this board does have term limits. This one is created in state statute, and so they do have a limit on two consecutive three-year terms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, and I, just please accommodate one comment. The reaction in this room that I think was rightfully addressed by a councilman was a response to disrespect from the council towards me. I would like to have an apology from that because I do think that I study every issue that I come here and talk about. So to say that I don't know something when I study every issue and I have walked Hooters Park five to 10 times, has the councilman who commented walked Hooters Park in the last six months three or four times? So to write, so please, and I actually respect the rules of the council verbatim almost every time, but when somebody disparages the public and you want to have tax increases in the future, so if you disparage the public, there's a Louisiana legislative audit briefing that warns you against that, I can send it to you, let you look at it. Respect the public if you want to get what you're asking for to pay for public issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, would you like to come up and say one?
Hey, I'm Bo Hayes, 635 Caledonia, Bossier City. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Chandler for calling me and asking me to serve in this position. I appreciate your time for considering me. Tourism has kind of been a thing that has been on my radar since we've become small business owners in the East Bank. I've spent the last five to six years trying to draw outside traffic into the East Bank District. The last probably year, I've served with the Tourism Bureau, kind of on their steering committee, kind of learning the ins and outs of what it is that they do. I hope that I have the ability to make sure that Bossier is properly represented in those meetings and that the interest this side of the river is taken as seriously as the other side. So I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Bo, we thank you for what you've done down there. I mean, I know you've been a spearhead of it, but there's one thing that I'd like to talk to you after the meeting on the email I received and just, just let you know about it.
What?
I got an email about something I'd like to talk to you about.
Yeah.
But I appreciate what you've done down there, though.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, I second that. You've done a fantastic job in the East Bank District and I know it's a group effort, there's a lot of good business owners down there, but, you know, we appreciate the buy-in that you have for Bossier City and the East Bank and it's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, well, I hope to see it continue to grow and we, as always, really appreciate the opportunity y'all afforded us. We were very small-time business owners that had to go through the whole learning process of figuring the ins and outs out, and you've been a tremendous help to us doing that. I hope y'all continue to support small business like that throughout the city.
Thank you, bro. Hey, Bo, if you need to leave, I can miss this engineering report if we don't mind. We can just walk back there and talk for a few minutes.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to trick or treat to this even.
Okay.
Hey, Bo, I appreciate you getting an appointment and, you know, accepting. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, happy to do it.
We hadn't voted him in yet.
Bo hasn't.
Hey, Bo, one question. Are, since you are going to be on this, I think you're going to be on this, are you still seeing a lot of influx coming in from East Texas that you're still getting down there? Because I know on the weekends, you're out walking around talking to everybody that's there.
Yeah, like, we've been trying to put a hard number on, like, just kind of in the district where everybody is coming from. I'd like to say we're somewhere between 35 and 40% Friday and Saturday from out of town, East Texas to Monroe. We get a lot from Texas County coming in as well. So I know we, we get a little advantage drawing them out of the casino hotels and just our proximity, but I mean, that's our vantage point for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bo.
Chair's overruled you leaving earlier. Chair's overruled you leaving.
I was overruled by who?
By me.
By you?
Yeah.
Don't think so.
All right, any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mary Giles, sixteen forty-eight Williamsburg Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I just wanted to come back up here because it seems like Mr. Darby kind of cut me short.
No, ma'am, you gotta speak specifically to this agenda item.
Okay, but it seems like you brought up Mr. Bo, and I asked a question. Oh, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure because it seems like Mr. Darby interrupted the fact that I, you know, I asked the question about where's the money going, and then he said something, and you guys cut me short. So I was just kind of wanting to know why that happened because this young man was gonna come up and ask the, ask the question about where the money goes for the baseball World Series. And I'm, maybe I'm confused about something.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Okay.
Can this be my answer?
Please.
Please.
You was, we was on the next item. You was speaking about the item that we previously talked about. You talked about the item that we're on right then.
Okay.
You can't, you know, you can't go back and forth.
Oh, okay.
Whoever comes up and speaks, you're speaking about the item that we're, that we're on right then.
Okay, but someone said, someone said in the end that I could talk with someone. I was just gonna get that information.
Oh, oh. You probably talked to, to Louis.
The big man out there.
Louis.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we are, any additional comments or questions from the public on the appointment for Mr. Bo Hayes, Shreveport Bossier Convention Tourism? No additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, reports.
Engineering Department Monthly Project Report. Clicker is up there.
Bo, y'all wanna go back there, or? Hey, Bo, y'all wanna talk? Y'all wanna hang around for, listen to Mr. Ben?
Yeah.
He gets some good information, though.
I'll make it quick.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Did you get that, Phyllis?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
We're done, right?
Good afternoon, council. This is my monthly update for engineering department efforts. Currently, we have about seventy-one million in ongoing design and construction projects. This is down a little bit. You can kind of notice that number's coming down quite a bit across all metrics. We have over sixty-three million currently under construction, eight projects in design or bid phase, four projects under construction, and five subdivisions engineering the construction phase. Walther Road Bigly Carriage Way continues to stay on schedule, really a little ahead of schedule. We're about seventy-nine percent complete with the project, and seventy-three percent of the time has elapsed out there. Tinsley Park Parking Improvements, currently, we are about forty-one percent complete with thirty-five percent of the time elapsed there. We're eleven days ahead of schedule. I think I've explained how I come up with that, probably a little better than that, but that's based on the last pay application I had. Tinsley Park Drainage Improvements, I don't have a pay application on that just yet. The contractor on that had sixty working days. That's not a calendar day project. As you can tell, he's making incredible progress out there, and as soon as I get the first application, I'll, I'll update this slide. And then Scott Street Drainage Improvements, contractor mobilized today. They're getting to work. We ran into a nine-hundred pair of communication cable that wasn't part of the original utility locate effort that we're trying to work around, but they're working, as we speak, on that to get that project moving. Private development, you have Canal Place Unit Four, the Preserve, Redwood Place Unit Number Twelve, Kane's Landing Unit Three, and we have a, a little entry, kind of a, a public road that's going in there for Rocket Fast as a shared road. You see that up just south of Benton Road. Projects in design or out for bid, lateral B-one drainage improvements, that project's essentially complete with the design. We're working through some easement acquisition efforts there that are getting complex, but I've been working with the city attorney's office to get those ironed out. Barto Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, that project is about ninety percent complete with design. We have some right-of-entry and right-of-way issues we're working through on that. The two thousand and twenty-three citywide street improvements project, that's a hundred percent. Got the council's approval on the additional funds today, so that one will be moving into bid shortly. Golden Meadows, Councilman Hammond, you had asked about that, I think, at the meeting before last. The design on that's complete. The plans are sitting at DOTD. We're looking to get approval from them, and then I'll be coming back to y'all seeking some additional funding to move that project forward. The North Gate Project, that's complete. I've solicited quotes from some contractors to build that. I'm waiting to have, waiting to receive those, and then pending that information, we'll get started. And then the City Hall Security Upgrades, we've been working on. That project's a hundred percent complete, and we're moving that into the bid phase here shortly. One thing I'd like to mention, since we've been talking about Hooter Park, I'm happy to meet with Bossier Parks and sit down and come up with a solution for how we can freshen that space up and then bring an ordinance before the council on funding for that, if that's what you guys would like from me to commission.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank y'all.
The last, the last meeting we had, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We asked about Hooters Park assessment.
Yes, sir.
Could you get Mr. Cook to bring us up to speed on what was the assessment?
I, I did email all y'all with pictures and stuff like that.
Sure, but I, I need him to come up and, and give that update.
Okay, thank you, sir. You have them?
I can get them right quick.
Louis, Louis, she's gonna have the pictures up.
I'm gonna get the pictures up. Give me just a second.
And Mr. Cook, since you're there, would you remind us of the order of management? How is that done? When there's a maintenance issue, how is that reported to you?
First of all, it can come in a number of different ways. We have park inspections every month on a monthly basis. We also have a community center manager that is there, and as soon as an issue is brought up, we work our best to address it and get it resolved.
Okay. Has any of these issues been brought up to you?
If you would look on page, are you gonna put?
I'm getting it.
Page two, you can see some of the things that we've done over the past ten years at Hooters Park.
Mm-hmm.
I want to make sure you all are aware that the city does not own Hooters Park in its entirety, that we lease probably a third to a half of that from CADA, and that was not discovered until April of two thousand and seventeen, that we did not own all of that park. So half of a playground runs through property that we don't own. Three-fourths of the walk-in trail with the walk-in trail lights are also on CADA's property. That front backstop belongs to CADA, and if, and if you're not in the wherewithal, you don't know those things, but there is some water that stand up there toward the front of the park after a heavy rain, but we don't own that. And unless you all tell me to spend taxpayer money on private property, I don't know that we're gonna do much with that. Now, CADA wants to make some improvements. I guess they could, but they'd have to run it all the way across directional board, go under the road, and go to the big ditch over there by Barksdale. So there are some things that we don't own.
Mr. Cook, real quick, could I ask a question? No, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Do, do, does CADA do anything on that park?
CADA uses the facility just like other citizens in the community. They're no more, no less involved.
They don't put no bucks into it, though?
No, sir.
Who, who built the, who put the playground equipment and the walk-in trail and the lights and the backstop? Who, who put all that there?
We did, and I don't know when. Some of that, that front playground was a replacement. The swings were a replacement at the front, where half of it goes through there, but that's been that way for decades, as far as I know. And right now, we're under a ten-year lease with CADA that started in two thousand and seventeen for fifteen thousand a year. After that ten-year term, then the price, I believe, goes up to twenty thousand a year.
Whew, that's a, that's an expensive mistake. So, real quick, Mr. Darby, if we put the equipment there and the lights there and the sidewalks there, are we not required to maintain them?
We maintain the equipment that we've installed, yes. I don't know that we're required to maintain the entire property.
No, but the, do we, do, you just said we put the backstop, the playground, the sidewalk, the lights, we put all that there?
Yes, sir, at some point.
So we're, we are incumbent to maintain what we put there.
That's correct. And it works.
Okay.
And some of it's new. A lot of it's new.
Okay. The, the issue before us, Mr. Cook, is the fact that when there's an issue of maintenance, that is, a administrative issue, that your staff reports to you.
Yes, sir, and we address it.
If they report it to you, your responsibility is to address it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and I think that's been missed here. That's the way that's done.
Every year, at every park.
And if you're saying every month that they are doing an inspection, survey, or whatever, then you know what's going on, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I just think it's, it's misleading to think that Hooters Park is neglectful or is neglected when you are the maintenance supervisor and you have staff that reports to you.
Yes, sir. I agree.
And how many parks do you, do you have?
We've, we've actually got eight sure enough parks, and I can go through them, whether it's Patricia, Jack Tuttle, North Bossier, Mike Wood, I can go through all those. We have eight athletic facilities, whether it's the new complex, which is T-two, the old complex, which is T-one, Tinsley Football, Tinsley Soccer, Wallbrook, Metta View, Swan Lake, and Shady Grove. And then we have at least five other areas to include the little Donald Bond Play Lot that we also mow that might not necessarily be parks, which is the area right beside Green Acres Middle School. There's a Metta View Play Lot, which is nothing more other than a play lot. It's an abandoned lot that we cut off Metta View Street. The area behind the South Bossier Library, we cut that as well, and we also cut the South Bossier Gas Station whenever we do the Walker Place Park. So we've got quite a few areas that we're responsible for.
And when you went recently to that facility, did you find something that you need to address?
The only ceiling tile, and it's not a ceiling tile that I saw, and I walked the entire inside, and I also want to make it clear that we do not, you know, the Parks and Recreation Department is not over Head Start. We don't have anything to do with that. Don't have anything to do with the driveway, the curbing at Head Start, although our facility manager does mow all of that. He mows from the very onset. When you come in and see the grand Hooters Park entrance side, all the way to the back, all the way to the backside of Barksdale on that property. So I've got a, one guy that's the manager that mows all of that. But other than that, these are some of the things, if I can back it up, that we've done in the last ten years, and I know there's been more done than that since I've been here. New park signage, if you come up there, we've got Martin Luther King signage. We've got new gym exterior doors, which I had, I believe, Precision Builders do. New coverage shade structure by, by the spray park, which was Thompson General Contractors. We've added engineered wood fiber to many of the playgrounds there. We still have sand in one. Two new playgrounds, and one of them that we replaced that was in dire need to be replaced. Two new sets of swing sets, new playground borders. We painted the entire outside of the community center as well as the gymnasium, and I have also showed our community manager how to mix a little water and a little bleach to get some of the mold off of the front entrance, which he has done, as well as the sign. In addition to that, some of it did need some touch-up painting. I've already contracted that with professional coating. They're scheduled to do that, which should take place in the next couple of weeks if we have some more warm weather come back. We painted the complete inside of the gymnasium on the walls, and you'll see some of the pictures where it was a very dull yellow and a worn-out white. We restyled the parking lot, repaired ballfield lights. We also have a little ballfield in the back, back there, and people do use it, and they contact our community center manager to schedule those practice times. We replaced the backstop fencing where the ballfield lights are. We relamped the entire gym with LED lights, which was a decent expense on the onset, but the LED savings will, over time, hopefully repay that back. We've replaced the walk-in trail lights with LED. We lowered and painted the gazebo, and my friends that live in the neighborhood remember the old red gazebo that was there. It was rusted, and you'll see that we've replaced the metal on it and painted, painted it as well. Refinished the outdoor basketball courts. We've added LED lights to the outside, and those LED lights are not cheap. We've added two, one on the top, one on the back. Those are twelve hundred dollars apiece, plus we put wall pack LED lights on. We've added a new gym floor cover and rack, so whenever Head Start or anybody rents the facility, we can put some rubber eye surfacing down to protect the gym floor that we get resurfaced every year. New refrigerator, new freezer. Myself and my maintenance supervisor, we fixed the stove in there, which took us about an hour, but we ordered the part, which is about a six hundred dollar part, but we saved about two thousand on labor from calling a appliance repair person. We've added in-ground benches, four brand-new heaters in the gym to keep them working, new padding behind the basketball goals, new P A system. But this was a real dark dingy brown. We painted the, the new overhead steelwork coming into Hooters Park. Everything from the left-hand side, I actually went out there and had our ballfield guy that paints our lines. We pulled a string, and I wanted you to see, so those of you that haven't been out there, what we own. If you're looking at this picture, we own everything to the right. We do not own the land to the left. All that land to the left, we do not own. All that, we do not own. We mow it, we maintain it. Everything to the right of that post, we do not own. So where Ms. Jard, Jeter has her community garden, we do not own that, but that is a part of CADA, and that is a part that we lease. Basketball court, we refinished. I'm probably gonna get them refinished in a couple of more years because it'll be about time. We've replaced backboards that have been broken out there. We replaced new picnic benches there. That's the gazebo that used to be red and rusted that we, and a cupola sat about that high. Half of it was missing, so we had a welder fabricate, lower it, and put new metal on it. That's one of the playgrounds that we replaced. This is one that is new, new swing set. That's a new one that we put since I've been here. This is an old one, but still functional, still, still meets the criteria. It's, it's safe. There's no issues with it. Two new swing sets that we've added in the last ten years. That's the second bicycle rack. The first bicycle rack that we added didn't fare too well, so we added a different style, and it has managed to uphold everything. That's the new signage that we put two to three years ago. Entire of the, outside of the facility was painted. It was also a dingy yellow. That was just the color of the metal, and some of the paint has peeled on the front where the mold and mildew has gotten. But all those lights on the outside are LED. We replaced those. That's the back. These are the two new sets of doors. Yes, the grass needs to be taken off the set on the right-hand side. I agree with that. That's the new pavilion that we put in the back by the spray park with four new picnic tables back there. Those picnic tables are about twenty-one hundred dollars apiece, and that's something that the public kind of takes for granted, is that we put those picnic tables at the parks. Ten years ago, those tables were eleven to twelve hundred dollars shipped direct. Now they're twenty, twenty-one hundred dollars plus shipping. So when some of the park managers ask some of our patrons to please don't sit on the picnic tables, that's why, because of the added expense. They're very expensive. They don't last that long. Those are the twelve hundred dollar lights that are LED. You say, God, that's a lot of money. It is, but we also want to illuminate that parking lot when we can play adult basketball, which we have in the, every year up until this past year, and we've advertised again this year. If we have enough teams, we want to make sure for security purposes that it's well illuminated. I don't see any ceiling tiles hanging or insulation hanging down, and I took pictures in there.
Did you look at the gym?
I have, and I'll get to that, sir. I sure will.
Please, y'all, remind the audience not to interrupt the speaker. If you wish to speak, come to the podium. Thank you.
We bought a new TV. We've got a little sitting area for the, for the folks to come up there. We've got some hand-me-down furniture that actually came from our office that we moved to that complex. So they do have a little area. They've got pool table. They also have a picnic, a ping-pong table. Inside of the craft room, and Ms. Jeter does a lot in that craft room, and we have a lot of functions in there as well, whether it's our Juneteenth celebration or other programs that Ms. Jeter hosts out, out of that room with the kitchen that you're gonna see here. Brand-new refrigerator, brand-new freezer that we've bought within the last three to four years. If you look at the picture on the left, this is while it's being painted. So if you can envision that yellow and dingy all the way around, that's what it looked like. If you see the white on the right, that's with it going from right to left as the company that we hired to paint painted. Also, if you look at the floor, that floor had not been sanded, not been refinished. I have subsequently had it sanded, and we get it refinished every year, and it will be refinished the first week of December of this year. That's what that same facility looks like today. If you walked over there right now, that's what you would see. New heater, new padding behind the basketball goal to your far right. That's the rack that holds the plastic liner that they put out on the floor to keep the floor from getting destroyed. destroyed. I'm an old basketball coach. I've coached at the high school and college level, so I know how important it is to take care of those floors. And sports floors out of Memphis, Tennessee are contracted to come down and redo our gym floors at Hooters and Shady Grove. That's the area that kind of holds water that I'm assuming Mr. Crockett's talking about. We don't own that. That's the curbing, I think, Mr. Crockett may be talking about. That's the Head Start going in. Those are where buses pull in and out, and I'm assuming that buses have damaged that. That's the insulation hanging down. We've taken a scissor lift over there. I don't know if you know what plumber's tape is, but if you've done any maintenance at all, it either comes in plastic or steel. It's in a roll, it's got a bunch of holes. We ran a piece across that as best we could and screwed it to the Z channel that's up there. Basketballs or volleyballs have done that. They played pickleball. We've also, and I didn't put that on there, I don't believe, we've also painted two pickleball courts on the basketball floor, and it gets used quite heavily, quite extensively, but I'm assuming basketballs and volleyballs have hit, hit that, and I have talked to my community center manager. One ball ended up there. Instead of leaving it as one, they threw, what, six or seven more up trying to get the one down. So that's what I have. Is it a brand-new pristine facility? No. The gym was there originally. The community center was added after the fact, and when I had a conversation with Mr. Rasha Buck, I believe, when he was a younger engineer, that he had some input on that facility. And I think that was before my time, but I think that community center part was maybe two thousand eight, two thousand ten-ish. I can't swear to that, but I think that's the rough estimate of timeline.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to get Mr. Rich to come up today
Wait.
to give us that update on the Fullup Drive drainage situation.
I don't have any, good afternoon, council, mayor. I don't have any pictures, but I think I forwarded you a picture
You did.
and also to the mayor of the before.
I just wanted you to confirm that that issue was addressed
That was addressed.
and resolved.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
He, he's been in the process of doing a lot of ditches while he can. These same guys that do the ditches do the pothole fixing and stuff, too.
This was just a broken rim around a catch basin.
Mr. Mayor, I hear some background noise. And, Mr. President?
Yeah.
But we have been on, working throughout the city, treading and cleaning ditches throughout the city, getting ready for the rainy season.
Wade, I want to thank you, and I know I already talked to you about it, what you did before the parade.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wade, for everything.
Thank you, Wade.
Okay, there's no comment. There's no comment. This is not on the item.
Sorry, I did want to add one other thing. Our community, at each of our community centers, our community center managers are responsible for floor care and maintenance, and they do the best that they can because we generally don't shut the facilities down. So could the floors need to be stripped and waxed? Yes, I don't disagree with that, and our, and our community center manager is aware of that, and we're going to get to that, but they do that, just like we did when I was in the school system. So it's not a matter of they're, they're broke, they're asbestos, they're not eight-by-eight tiles, which is asbestos. They're full-size, regular tiles, it just needs to be stripped and waxed.
Okay.
Hey, Louis, I got a question.
Cray Myrtles coming in. You know, we, we do tree trimming, shrub trimming in, in a late December, first part of January, so we'll get to the cray Myrtles as we come in as well.
I got a question after the meeting.
Sure.
There's no public comment.
Comments.
It's not an agenda item. It's not an agenda item.
Not anything that you're voting on.
Come, come real quick and be quick, please.
Well, I just want, Deborah Ross, twelve hundred Fullup Bojor City, Louisiana.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted the drainage system. I thank you guys for coming in repairing the broken concrete that I was talking about with the rail thing breaking up out of, and they did come out and they did repair it. But my only course, Neil, it rained, you know, it rained this week, right? So when it rained, I think water don't roll uphill, it goes down, and I think that when they did the drain, I think it's kind of higher than the, the level of the street is. So they're going to end up having to come back because if not, the street is going to be flooded again. I mean, y'all came out and y'all did good, but if you notice that when the guys got done, the, you know, it's like this. This is the, this is the street. This is the drain. This is the street. It doesn't go down into the drain.